But in their debate and in their decisions, they may faithfully discharge the duties of their office and promote the health, safety and wellbeing of those they seek to serve through Jesus Christ our Lord. Amen. We are now going to members, offices and members of the public to this 257th special meeting of the council. I'll just read the normal notice you are on the floor. Notice to anyone intending for the board meeting. If you would like to film, log, tweet or take photographs of the meeting or are permitted to do so, then that causing disturbance to the meeting proceedings. A designated area has been set out to allow you to do this. Please be aware that you are not permitted to move outside the designated area as this may disrupt the meeting. A protocol which governs this activity has been placed on the table for your own connection. Please also be aware that members of the public who are not part of the meeting have not consented to being recorded. Therefore, please do not include them in any recording activity. And I would thank you for your cooperation. So then as we go to tonight's agenda, item one apologies, I have apologies from Councilor Bailey. I think that makes it completed for the 24th this evening. On my chairman's an absence, I have none which are circulated. However, I think members will agree that tonight's meeting in part is under somewhat sad circumstances because since our last meeting, we've had the resignation of Councilor King on the grounds of his unfortunately continuing ill health. And that is something that I don't think any member in this council already within our well-fulfilled country group would have wished. An absence were made to the press and to the radio, I did a radio interview. That in case you didn't have a chance to see it, my words were, "We are extremely sorry to see Councilor King disarmed and will continue to do all that we can to support him and his family going forward." Councilor King has been asked and believed an important member and has made an immeasurable contribution to our county through years of dedicated public service and that 17 years in all. His presence on this council will be sorely missed and I'm sure you will agree that those words are very appropriate for Councilor King. I did have the opportunity of telling Teddy Dragon earlier this week and I explained that we were holding a special meeting tonight. And obviously I gave him the very best wishes of you all in his difficult position going forward. So I thought that was appropriate when I actually say that. So moving on, on an absence item, agenda item three, I believe there are none. From, she, I can't remember if that's fine. Item four declarations of interest, members on tonight's agenda. Okay, none. Agenda item five petitions, deputations are none. Item six measures from members, there are none. So then we go on agenda item seven for the election of the leader of the council. And I am looking for proposals and nominations. As the day. I think I was avoiding this, it was Jeff. Yes, Councilor Bailey. Thank you. I would like to propose Mr. Mathias, Jeff, Councilor Mathias, proposal. I have a second agenda, which will be, speaking with my councilman Willby. Are there any other nominations? Okay, so I have a proposer, I have a second agenda, we will go straight to the vote. All those in favor?
Nineteen, Jeff.
Any events? Go please.
One, Jeff.
Any abstentions?
Four, Chair.
Thank you. Congratulations, Councilor Bailey. And as the leader of the council, following in some hollow footsteps from the past. Would you like to perhaps say a few words?
Thank you, Jeff. Thank you for the conference. Yes, for following some bigger footsteps. I think all I'd like to say is that I want to give the data and find out what they mean to that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So therefore, therefore we move to agenda item eight. Is it your wish that this evening you want to notify members of the planning positions?
Yes, Chair, it is. Myself, I will be taking a portfolio which includes finance, highways, transport and not hands. Oliver Halsey will be taking, will become portfolio holder for growth, trading services and resources excluding finance. Then Willby will remain portfolio holder for life insurance earning. Richard Foster will remain portfolio holder for chairman, us by children and young people doing safeguarding. Bishop Clefter will be portfolio holder for adult social care and health. And finally, Alan Walters will be portfolio holder for community safety, culture, sport, recreation and environment. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. And all those positions will be duly noted. Thank you. Agenda item nine, again I'm looking at our leader. Is it your wish that you wish to appoint your deputy this evening to notify members?
Yes, Chair, it is. I'd like the deputy leader to be on the council base. Thank you.
Thank you. And that's duly noted. I think members will recall that it is the authority of the leader to pick its own cabinet members deputy and that will go forward until the next elections in May 2019. Thank you. We now go to agenda item 10, which is the political balance six report, number 352017. Page is fine to make, but this evening you should also have before you an amendment to this report. I have been advised that the group leaders met on Tuesday this week. So I think there is mainly consensus on this paper is, or consensus or certainly agreement. But I am going to ask the monitoring officer to take this through this paper and then I can open up to any questions from the members once I have a proposal and a second.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilor Bailey requires that we visit the political balance this evening following the evacuation of Councilor King. So if I do the first two recommendations on the paper first. So the political balance calculation set out have two, three and four. Shows the political balance of revised counts of 25 at the moment as we have our place at the council. And that shows how many of seats overall needs to be allocated between the groups and the multiple members. I would just clarify about this point, as I'm sure members are curious to know that although the calculation of saying the little democracy and the non-alien members, the rounding of the seven places actually goes to the little democrats group. Because as a group they have entitled the non-alien members to allocate seats. The balancing of seats, I feel like the groups have their entitlements, so that clarifies the difference. There also there needs to approve the allocation of seats to the political groups. And that was included in the taking of the agenda report. I find it does actually say that it's been amended for making a recommendation that the agenda report has been provided for you this evening. And that has been for the leaders concerning the allocation of the seats across the groups. The change is on the children's scrutiny panel, which the conservatives group now have one less seat and the little democrats group have taken this seat. There are no changes to the independent groups' seats or to the non-alien members. So if we could deal with the first two recommendations now and then I'll come back to recommendation three. Only the, how the waters, your place of cabinet, we need to, about today, the waters group to chair the cabinet. First of all, please.
So I'm looking for a proposal, Councilor Mathias, Councilor Halsey, as you are the leader in part of groups, I have a proposal and a second. And I think, yes, the reason for the monitoring officer saying we want to perhaps vote on those first two items but then we'll be a little bit of explanation on item three in the papers and probably, but I think that's fairly fair and straightforward. So I have a proposer, I have a second. Are there any questions that members require to ask? Councilor Bailey. I want to get clear, this is just until we have a new member elected or my election. I think that's almost certainly correct. Since we have a new member, I'll do a by-election when that is called. Yes, that will affect the political balance and we will have to take the paper again, actively cancel, act appropriately, fully cancel. Are there any, are there any other questions then, members? No? So we have a proposer, we have a second. Are you happy then we have no questions, that we will take items one and two en bloc? Yes, thank you. So we have a proposal that council approves the revised political balance calculation as per the paragraph two, three of this report. And two, the council approves the allocation of seats to political groups contained within appendix, within the appendix of this report, which is explained by the monitoring officer. All those in favor?
Nineteen, Chair.
Thank you very much. I think then this is all, I'll hand back to you.
Finally then, as was previously mentioned, we need to deal with the election of the chair to the resources scrutiny panel. Members will be free of the process of going through annual council, but the chairs of committees and panels are voting quite for council. It doesn't affect the decision you just made to just about to give seats. So I'll hand back to the chair.
So I'm looking for proposals, sorry.
Could I ask a point of order?
I'm not sure. Yes, you can ask that.
Thank you. When we reach annual council, we know that we will be voting for chairs. We have noticed in advance because it's in the report, the chair of the scrutiny panels. In this instance, only the majority who knew a lot of changes that were going to be forthcoming knew that there would be a vacancy in a chair of a scrutiny panel. Therefore, no other members had an opportunity to consider and certainly the members of the resources panel have, of our committee members haven't had an opportunity to think whether they might want to chair it. Is it therefore correct within our standing orders that we can be basically pushed into voting in a situation where we didn't know we were going to have a vote?
I'll just get the monitoring officer to answer that one.
Thank you, Chair. To clarify what about the constitution's standing orders? And that's something that the president's dealing with at this evening. And recommendation, recommendation three per report does allow an opportunity to deal with any consequential changes that have been made as a result of this evening's meeting. So I can't see anything that would prevent us from using of, from taking this decision there.
Can I propose an amendment to the recommendation then?
Yes, Chair.
Sorry, sorry. I was thinking, not being. May I propose an amendment to the recommendation then?
I'm not sure that that we would actually can, maybe I'll check that. No, we've not had a proposer yet, you see, we have to. First of all, we, I mean, going back one step. I think it's been agreed that we can appoint the chair of resources this evening. So in the normal instance now, I would go forward and ask for nominations on the floor with a second. And then we would go to the normal vote. I'm not sure that any other way forward, it's going to work within our constitution.
May I ask another question then, please, Chair?
Yes. Right, I think, right, okay. What, one I think is the best way forward is the standard procedures going forward. Is that I would call for a nomination which is proposed and seconded. But then before we go to the vote, you come forward as an amendment, unless I haven't fully. So you could come forward with an amendment and say, rather than go ahead this evening and make the vote, I would like to propose this and providing you have a second. We can go to the vote and then you're on the amendment, either you fall or stand. And that's it. If it stands, that's the end of the matter. But if it falls, we go back to the original proposal. But I didn't, but I don't choose, sorry. Don't you do it. But I don't know whether that. Actually, I'm not making a lot of decisions. No, there we are. Okay, no, third one, third one. I'm finally just. So we're going to go to agenda item three, the actual, the item three, that council approves any change in committee and power management as necessary dependent on the recommendations. So we need to get that through first of all. So I need a proposer and I need a second. On item three. Yes, Councilor Mathias, if you believe in things now, do I have a second? I have a second, that's the problem. Okay, thank you very much. So we need to vote on that. All those in favor? Just on that. Yes, we're not going to second. So you're not, you're not going to have a proposal, Mary. Okay, so you need to do that.
I should like to propose an amendment to this point three to say that we defer such decision until the next council meeting, for council meeting on the grounds that we, on this side, some of us worked where Councilor Walters was going to be moving into cabinet. And also that when Councilor Walters was made to chair resources panel, he actually was not in the same political group that he is now in currently. And I feel there needs to be some consideration as to which particular political group chaired this particular panel. And that takes time for consideration to session.
Your actual proposal is fair. There, I am looking for a second. Okay, I'll take the second from Councilor Austin, so I have a proposer, I have a second. So now we are going to vote on the, yes, okay. Any, any comments on that? Anyone would like to speak on that? Absolutely.
Okay, like the current partnership. As far as panels concerned, does the chair have to be from the current panel? Because that may also change as we've just done the political balance, therefore we may have changed just by saying.
There's a monitoring officer.
Thank you, Chair. So the chair does not have to conform to the existing motion for the resources scrutiny panel. It can be any council that is not a member of the council.
Okay, so if there are, I'm going to comment to me, we can actually go to the vote on the amendment. If the amendment is carried, then that concludes matter. If it falls, then we go back to the original proposal. All those in favor of amendment, I said, I'd like to counter the vote.
Eighteen, Chair.
Okay.
Fifteen, Chair.
Abstentions. Number one, okay. So the amendment is defeated. So therefore we go back to agenda item two. I have a proposer, I have a second and we can go straight to the vote unless there are any comments again on that with a chicken side. No, I guess not. So therefore all those in favor on item three, as previously outlined, I have a proposer and second, all those in favor.
Sixteen, Chair.
Yes. Record please. Abstentions. Thank you. So that motion is carried. Now therefore we need to appoint a chair of scrutiny resources this evening. Can I look for any proposals around the chair? Councilor Austin. And I propose Councilor Buck. Councilor Buck, are you prepared to accept that, Councilor? Is there a second? I have a model there. That, are there? So I have a proposer, I have a second for Councilor Buck. Are there any other proposals, please? Councilor Tons, if you must, Chair, will propose that Councilor Watt. You're prepared to be said, you may have a second, Councilor, thank you. So I have a proposer and a second. And in our normal procedure, therefore, are there any other nominations around the table? I have two, Councilor Buck and Councilor Watt. Procedure is I would ask Councilor Buck if you would risk to speak before we go to vote. In light of that, I would then put for Councilor Watt if she so wishes to say a few words. Councilor Buck.
I just like to say it's an opportunity to think that we have a privilege to be able to chair this particular committee. I think at the time, local and local government had been under scrutiny of our public. It was really important that the procedures that were put in place are scrutinized properly. I just, we can be confident that if everybody comes to the spotlight, that we, that the public would be confident that we're doing everything procedurally in the right way. And that, in my experience, in what I'm doing, these kind of, kind of procedures with safeguarding or, you know, putting policies in place. It's just, it's, it's safe, like, and natural, all the work that I've been doing, a lot of the charity work, I'm getting a bit, I'm holiday. I totally understand the importance of procedure and the importance of getting the basics right. If you don't get the basics right, then it's going to fall down. So this is a really very important position. I do understand, I respect, you know, what an important role it is and I'll be steadfast in giving, you know, you know, be very committed to do this for. Thank you.
Councilor Bailey.
Thank you. I have been a member of the resources scrutiny panel for a number of years. I fully understand how it works. I also have a long working history in local government and in auditing local government. I understand how local government finance not only works now, but historically how it's changed over the decades. And from that point of view, the subject matter of this panel, I am extremely familiar with. I also understand how scrutiny should be working on a wider topic and therefore be able to contribute to the scrutiny commission. And finally, it is extremely unusual in this country for the majority of the scrutiny panels in any local authority to be chaired by members of the ruling group. And in fact, in many authorities, the chairman of their scrutiny commission or its equivalent has to be the leader of the main opposition group. And I fear that if we are continuing down this road of moving more and more that all our committees and panels are controlled by the ruling group, and I don't mean this in any way disrespectful to the individuals within that group. This is a matter of principle, not a matter of people. That it will become more and more difficult for us all to say we are present transparently and openly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Watt. So therefore, what I will be asking for in this situation, I will be asking for votes for Councilor Buck and then votes in favor of Councilor Watt. All those in favor of Councilor Buck.
Fifteen, Chair.
Thank you. And for Councilor Watt.
Eighteen.
Thank you very much. So congratulations to Councilor. Oh, sorry, beg your pardon. I thought that's solid. Are there any extensions?
Abstentions.
No, no. We therefore come to the front. Shall we take that? We did, we did take all that. Sorry, did you last spot. Okay. So let's, to be correct, should we just do this again so that they are? Let's take it again. All those in favor for Councilor Buck. Okay, and for, I think it was Councilor Buck who was not going to. I think that's, you were the intention, but you didn't have it. Sorry, then. We have, well, so therefore then we just make sure, absolutely sure, no change. I don't think there will be for Councilor Watt. Yes, apologies to that time, just that whole thing that I just explained. So that connotations and commotionations to the Councilor Watt. So that concludes the agenda, item number ten. We now move to agenda item eleven. So in your papers on the procedure two, we have six signatures. And in my discussion. Five, okay. Yes, five, sorry, five. And in my discussion just prior to the starting meeting, I understand that Councilor Halsey is going to be speaking to the motion. But before we get that, I need a, to actually get it on the floor to be discussed. I need a proposer to the motion, Councilor Halsey. I need a second, Councilor Watt, okay, thank you. And all those in, we need to vote on, no, we're going to, no, we're going to, sorry. Taking you to the end already. So we have a proposer, we have a second. So therefore I'm going to invite Councilor Halsey to speak. I just need to remind everyone that Councilor Halsey will have five minutes to present. And then as he is presenting the motion, he will have the opportunity to sum up at the very end. And then when we go to the debate, members, you will have five minutes and five minutes only individually and no opportunity to actually come back, of course, unless it's a point of information. So, Councilor.
Lady of the General, yes. This council's cabinet has recently approved two major policy development decisions in parliament without the issues being considered by the council as a whole, prime as a cabinet decision. And that is an exciting opportunity for members to consider major policy developments. United States has facilitated opportunities for members to consider major policy developments before decisions are made. We would like to propose that scrutiny panel needs to be increased to ten per municipal year for each panel, that the forward plan be for six months, that the forward plan include a column indicating when and which scrutiny panel will be considering each item. And that this council reviews with external support how scrutiny panel operates and makes recommendations for improvements to be implemented from the fiscal year twenty eighteen nineteen. And the reasons for these motions, we'd like to add on now, on now. In twenty thirteen, the council held fourteen full council meetings and nine scrutiny meetings for each of the four scrutiny panels. In addition, we had task and finish groups looking at home for school and public transport and street lights provision, the latter of which has resulted in a radical overhaul of all the street lights in the county. In following the review, the county had a full inventory of its street lights. There was recognition that open should contribute to the cost of its lighting, as the parishers did, and the cost of lighting should be borne by users, not the rate players at large. All of this happened because of the task and finish review. Equally, the review of transport prompted further work for the cabinet, which has led to substantial savings, largely due to the rationalisation suggested by the task and finish group. Because of the frequency of meetings, we were able to do justice to all the items on the agenda rather than mindful of the clock and how much time we had left to devote to meeting. In twenty sixteen, we had seven full council meetings and only four scrutiny meetings. They're not going to affect that, that there's little time to vote properly to the items on the agenda and no reviews involving all members. Possibly, these reviews would have been made for visions for future viable. You can get, you can read your cabinet papers to get information. Scrutiny isn't about information sharing, but about holding to account and policy development. As the Local Government Association makes clear, for scrutiny to be effective, it needs to be seen as a critical friend. And it is important to identify where decisions could be improved and how to prevent mistakes being made or repeated. However, the focus should be on forward thinking and making positive changes, rather than portioning blame and focusing on the negatives. Successful scrutiny relies on following conditions. Effective work programming, and work programming is the planning stage of scrutiny where subjects of further investigation are identified. It is most effective when there are clear criteria for the selection of subjects and agenda items, which is one of the reasons why we have asked for scrutiny for the forward plans and highlights which scrutiny panel we go to. Scrutiny works well when a county's executive views it in a positive light and has an opportunity to improve council performance. Scrutiny's effectiveness would be reduced if the executive sees it as aggressively critical, which will lead to defensive advocates and make it difficult for scrutiny to influence change. Similarly, scrutiny can be more effective if council officers are willing to provide information and assistance when required. And this has never been a problem in the past, I must add, this is just what the LGA is saying about strengths of scrutiny. So. Scrutiny work includes looking at issues that are politically contentious locally and high profile, and as such, an element of political disagreement is inevitable. So that's the most helpful part to put, and I will reserve the rights of someone up here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I agree with that, Council Austin said, oh, the CEO, as you said, you proposed a second, but I'm the old one. Council everyone, this is open to members to, for their part, it's Council everyone.
Thank you very much, Chair. I'm aware that this is something that members feel strongly about. However, I know with interest that some of the members who felt strongly enough to support the motion do not have high scrutiny attendance records. It seems to me that a perception of lack of involvement in decisions stem back to some recent decisions that Mark has mentioned. And these were rightly made by Cabinet. And some members feel they should have had the option to contribute their views despite the following mechanisms. The issues were not considered by scrutiny despite them being on the forward plan, aware and when clear opportunities to do so existed. Members rarely share their concerns with Cabinet Chair and rarely attend cabinets. There have been no requests for a special or additional scrutiny meeting, despite the CEO making a clear annual cancel on the council, but this was possible. In relation to the most recent, well, most recent example, although the future's dialled up. Members were all invited to a visit, and their feedback from that visit fed into the report and the recommendations. Up to the Friday before camp, but only one member, that I'm aware of, actually asked more questions on the report. Moving to the specific proposals referred to, I'm going to refer them as A through to D. So, A, the impact of this would be significant. With already, in my opinion, relatively poor attendance records, a doubling of the current scrutiny commitment is hard work for a lot of people. There would be a requirement for an additional new resource, probably around twenty five thousand pounds. And there is a significant opportunity cost for officers and directors who have to attend additional meetings when they could be doing other things. B, this could be done relatively easily, but there would still be instances where significantly less notice is provided. The statutory requirement for items on the forward plan is twenty eight bits. We are usually well in excess of that, but no guarantee can be given in regard to this. If the council votes for this, the CEO and head of the monitoring officer would subsequently have to report back to the council on the way of this work. C, this needs to remain a scrutiny chair decision. It should not be up to corporate services to decide who which scrutiny gets to see which report. If considered health force members, I suggest the cabinet reports be made publicly available for two weeks rather than come from one week. And the group leaders then pull questions relating to those reports and feed them to the Chair of Cabinet. D, there is an overview on scrutiny, sorry, I've lost my way here. There is an overview on scrutiny in local government that has been launched, and I said I had the link earlier today, I hope you'll have to look at that. Members may wish to revisit this part of the motion when that inquiry is completed. If we consider it now rather than waiting, there is a cost estimate, it could be fifteen thousand thereabouts, and possible, that could result in a possible recommendation for another full-time scrutiny support officer, and again, at about thirty thousand pounds. So, an increase in budget will be required. And then, if we're subject to the inquiry being completed by Cabinet, we might be subject to further change post that inquiry.
Thank you, Chair. Having listened to both Council Austin and the Leader set out both sides, I think that I would like to actually propose an amendment to this motion, if I could, based on the fact that the communities and local government select committee are actually looking at this at the moment.
You can propose, then, but it would obviously be taking up your time.
That's absolutely fine. So what I would like to propose as the amendment is that we actually strike the bullet point A to D and replace those. We request the council consider the outcomes of the communities and local government select committee once published, and task the scrutiny committee to bring forward proposals to improve our committee structure and processes that address those recommendations.
I will need a second, Council Foster, okay. Just from the chair, you are talking about, for other members, this is the cabinet paper, which is out to consultation, and the real consultation closes in March, in a few weeks' time.
This is Select Committee that are calling for evidence. That evidence call ends at the end of the month, yeah, in March, I believe, actually. And they are really forward recommendations that will lead potentially to change in their decision, which means that if we make changes, nobody can make a difference.
That's fine, that's the requirement, and I just wanted to clarify for other members. I have a proposal, I have a second, however, right, we can now go out to debate that and ask any questions from members. And, sorry, yes, and to be, yes, so to be absolutely sure, therefore, I have amendments on the table, and we can, you're going to talk about the amendment, and then we will go, the same as before this evening, we will go to a vote either for, or it will be for Council Waller.
Before I speak, Chair, could I just, I have a question answered. If I speak to the amendment, which I wish to do, and if the amendment falls, will I have the option to speak to this substantial motion?
Yes.
Thank you. I have some sympathy, excuse me, with the spirit of this amendment, but I think practically I can't support it for two reasons. First, this is not the first time the Select Committee has considered scrutiny, and the outcomes from the last review, we have still not embraced within Ruffeland. And secondly, the fact that it is a Select Committee looking at it doesn't mean there will be any changes in subsequent legislation. And I would be surprised if there are, given that the legislation is sound, but we're just not implementing it very well. And for those reasons, I'm not prepared to support it, remember.
Right, Council, come in.
Thanks, Chair, I will ask these office amendment. The reasons for this is that this consultation, we go on for some time. I, myself, along with all the offices, have attended a course consultation learned by East Midlands councils, where we met fellow councillors from local community, unitary authorities, and we debated where we think it's going forward. And the overwhelming majority see it as going in different directions to where we are now. And I believe that once that information has been further consulted on at governmental level, we will see a lot of changes. And so to make changes at this moment in time, that we would have to revisit and reverse at some point in the future, I think it's contradictory, good work practice, and so I support the amendment.
County Council. As the proposal of the previous motion, it will come as a surprise that I do not support this proposition. All we're asking for is to go back to the way it was in twenty thirteen, when we were able to then look at items effectively, in fact, Cabinet asked for the street lights review. They asked for scrutiny specifically to look at the street light review. It took two years for that review, I know because I was one of the people that tried it. So if we vote this evening to carry on with the status quo, I'll just remind members that that would leave us with four scrutiny panels a year and seven full council, as opposed to fourteen full council. So you ask the question, do you want to be more effective as members, or do you just want to sit back and allow it to happen? It's entirely in your hands to see. So, but I cannot support this motion.
I think you meant ten council meetings, absolutely.
Well, I counted in my diary fourteen.
No, cancel.
Four council.
Four or four. Sorry, I thought you said we had four.
Four councils, yes, thank you, fourteen full council in twenty thirteen, thank you. And seven, I counted in my diary, because I know there were.
No, I'm sorry, because in my, it was my hearing, I was just making a big mistake this evening, I had everything there, thank you. Other than any other members, yes, Council here.
Briefly on, I'll explain my council files, referring to the additional cost of additional scrutiny reasons. What he's actually saying is, we've already cut, we've already cut the role of the scrutiny panel to save money. I don't think anyone can argue with that. If we reinstated what we previously had, then the cost would have been higher than it is currently. So in order to save money, we've actually cut scrutiny panels, which to me, does nothing to enhance the public confidence in this council. When we did have more scrutiny meetings, we did have members that probably would come along to those meetings. And Mr Thomas referred to cabinet meetings, and very few care for attending those meetings. It is the only council meeting that I'm aware of that dates based during the day rather than in the evening. And if we want, if we want to realistically sort of tend these meetings, then it's got to be at the time, it's more acceptable to most people in the public. And that includes councillors, such as myself, opportunity is important for myself, probably is for the councillors, right there.
Point of information from this, from this question, is, in the emergency of the amendment, you talked about a scrutiny committee. Could you please explain what you mean?
Sorry, I thought I said scrutiny commission, and that's what I meant.
Okay, thank you. Members, as I say, we have an amendment, you'll have the opportunity to speak. If not, I have a proposal, I have a second, on my just, for clarity, our readout. So the amendment reads, we request the council consider the outcome of the committees under local government, CLC, Select Committee, and take the scrutiny commission to bring forward proposals for improvement to our committee structure, and present at address the recommendation of the Commons Select Committee once they are published. So that is the main gist, I think, of what you were actually saying at the question. So we will go to the vote on that, all those in favour.
Sixteen, Chair.
Against?
Eighteen.
Extinctions. That's correct, that text to the correct number. So therefore, the actual, the amendment is carried, and that, by voting, becomes a substantive motion, so the actual motion before us this evening falls. So that actually limits, there is no, any other business this evening. I just, I'm just perhaps taking the opportunity to remind Council a bit on Monday in this chamber. It's, we have a presentation from the Banbury Commission, which will then, I can assure you, by about ten to seven, we thought we have to take then the parish council forum. And just on behalf of the Chief Exec, I think she might do what she wants to do.
Chair, I think just the, the scrutiny chairs, stay here just five minutes at the end, just have to move yours up then.
So thank you for your attendance, members, right, it's very hard, I stand up, I close the meeting on my own, just to...